Kerry, you're gonna be ready. Dalton's good.
Hi Jonathan.
Oh, hi Devon.
How are you?
Looks like high definition.
Alright, ready? Alright. Hey everybody, this is the Town of Dayton zoning board of appeals, regular meeting, public hearing, officially called to order at seven o'clock on the dot. If you can please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Let the legends do the flag of the United States of America to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, so the first thing on our agenda before we go down to Stonegate Landing, we do have to reorganize the board, which we do every year. We did not do it at the last meeting because Greg, who was vice chair, was not here. I didn't think it was fair to reorganize without him being here, for how to say. So we will do that tonight. Obviously, we have currently, I'm the chair, Greg's vice chair, Jonathan Gale is clerk. To go on, we would need nominations, seconds, and then discussion and voting. So for that being said, is there anybody here who is interested in any nominations for tonight?
I make a motion to keep it the same.
I second that.
Do we need to do all three positions individually? Or can we just, if all three members are all fine staying the same, and do we need three, do we need three different votes?
Oh, I would, just in case, yeah.
Okay, okay, so then.
Motion to accept Zachary Carron as chairman of the zoning board of appeals.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next would be vice chair.
Motion for Greg Logan to remain as the vice chair of the zoning board of appeals.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And clerk?
Motion for Jonathan Gale to stay as the clerk of the zoning board of appeals.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Alright.
Aye. Fantastic. Next is to confirm the next meeting date, which is September 24th, 2024, Tuesday. Does that work for everybody? I did check, it works for me.
I'm good.
That works for me, I'll be joining by Zoom.
Sure, no problem. Mr. Fedorov, if you, if you're new for that meeting, does that time work for you? It'd be the 24th of September would be your next meeting?
Yep.
I understand, I definitely understand that. Okay, so next was go right into review, discuss an act LLC, Westerly side of Somerset Ave, map line, map nine, status update of phase one. Mr. Fedorov is here for the case. He did present us some correspondence that we all do have in our packets, and I will let him come up. And obviously, we'll take one thing out of, you kind of have two different item, I don't want to say agenda items, two topics listed out, and then five points for discussion. So we'll just go through each thing one at a time. So if you want to start with your first emergency access from Somerset Ave Route 138, you want to start with that first.
This is really good, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. Because we need to resolve that issue. You know, I attached to what I said in was a letter from the police chief going back to March of 2023.
Right.
And in his letter, he acknowledges that the whole plan was a one-way emergency access, and describes the issue they have with the big bump coming in. And he mentioned in his letter that perhaps we could make it a two-way. Well, that's impossible, we don't have enough land to do that. And the second thing, if we were to make it an in-and-out, we'd have a real problem with DOT because they'll want that radius go forever.
Right.
It'll go in front of Navy jads, and it just wouldn't seem to be workable. So I endorse the idea of making it a one-way in. And I think the only way to control the traffic going back and forth, if we could put a gate, a mechanical gate, okay, that we can put across the access just before it reaches the cul-de-sac, so it's clear from the cul-de-sac. And, you know, emergency services, there'd be a typical fire department key box. So they have to stop, take the key out, lift it up, and they go through, okay? Otherwise, I don't know how we control it. And I think we need a decision on that because if that's left hanging, you know, what should I do there? Do I top it? Do I do this? Do I put speed bumps back? I mean, I think we've got to get it over with and make a decision, really, to what the board originally approved, the one-way access. And I'm more than willing to put up a gate, and that would just solve the whole thing.
I agree, it sounds like we have to find the lesser of the evils. My, my only problem with the mechanical gate for fire department, I mean, God forbid, I know it seems like, oh, he's getting out and getting a key, that's seconds. That matters in safety. So, but I understand, like, it's the best way to do it because it's a gate, no one else but the fire department, but I, that's, I don't know, that's how I feel about the gate. I mean, I understand why that's, it physically stops people from going through, but in an emergency situation, those, that 30 seconds is going to take the fire department to get out of the truck and back into the truck. That's a minute.
Mr. Chairman, we could also get the gate to be very lightweight, that a fire truck could go right through it. Alright.
Well, I got a question. So you say mechanical gate, you don't think an electrified gate with a keypad on this side of entry would be the better way? Just hit the button, an electric gate moves up, they can go out, they can exit from the other side because there's no keypad.
Problem with the electric gate, they can freeze in the winter.
Well, I do a lot of service with those, and the ones that slide, yes, the ones that pivot up and pivot down, the whole gate would go up. It's good for us with the ice and snow, it works. So they're a little costly, and you'd have to, everybody would have to have a code to enter in. And again, the gate code would be on the driver's side, entering into the parking lot, three-digit code, four-digit code, you hit it, it'll be one on the other side, so they can't enter through there, but yet they can drive through there. I mean, it's an option, and it's an expense that we weren't expecting either at that point, but I just, there is another way of doing it.
Well, Mr. Logan, let me look into it.
Sure.
I did a 16-unit apartment building in Taunton, it's called the Fenway Center, and I wanted to put a gate, electric, so, okay? But the requirements from the fire department were just, you know, it just made it.
High, it would also have to be able to radius and a point out of where they touch. We, the ones that I service are 22 to 24 feet wide, and fire apparatus is 18. So it is a narrower situation, don't get me wrong, but in lieu of an emergency, they pull up, they hit the gate pad, boom, door opens, they go through. And, but you wouldn't have that on the side coming out, so they, nobody could exit out that way.
No, they couldn't.
Have you spoken to the fire department recently?
Excuse me, sir?
Have you spoken to the fire department recently?
I, I wanted to talk to you guys first, okay? And you give me the go, and the fire, the, the police department, they, he recommended a possible gate.
Yeah, I would recommend reaching out to them again, only because this is a new police chief.
Okay.
And also, this letter was by 2023, and I know, you know, here we are, it's over a year with this letter. And it's the time change, the time difference isn't the biggest thing, but we do have a new police chief. So I think I'd be curious, and I don't want to disregard what our former police chief had to say. I'm not saying his, his comments would be any different than what the current police chief is, but I just feel like it would be better to get our current police chief's opinion on it. I don't know how you feel about that.
No, I think it's a good idea.
I'd like to get both opinions, because I think.
Yeah, I was gonna say that.
The fire chief.
Because, you know.
One nice thing we have, when that access come in and makes the bend to go to the circle, it narrows down to about 12 feet.
Right, it's the, it's not.
It's not gonna be a big, no matter what it is.
My concern is, for example, with police, with the fire department, it can be an emergency where they, they may have a better idea whether they would rather have a code,
I'll go there.
or, or a key. But separately from that, with the police department, for example, if they're responding to a domestic situation or something, they may want to come in unannounced or with their lights off or this or that, then they may, that may change things depending upon.
Right.
what happens there. So you may want to circle back with, with the, both of them in the same room at the same time.
But in a case like that, Mr. Gale, they also have access off Center Street.
Right.
It's not very.
Right, I understand that.
It's not the only way.
No, but then they, I understand that, but they both may have a same opinion or they may have a separate opinion. It would be important for us to know, and why.
So, yeah, my, I know I'm voting per se, but my. My, my suggestion would be reaching out to the current police chief. Yeah, yep.
Before I go, I'll research, maybe you could help me, Greg, okay? What's on the market?
Yeah, I can give you connections. I can give you all the connections you need for that.
Because I wanted a gate going in and a gate going out, that they could drive it. And after I talked to the fire department, they told me, they told me the horror.
They don't like those.
No, they don't, okay.
And did you have anything else regarding the emergency access?
Yeah, I also, we keep it one-way in, okay? You know, the, I did go to the DEP last year to reopen the permit, okay? And from the time 2024 to 20, I mean, 2004 to 2024, the rules have changed quite a bit, okay? And if, and I talked to them about, if, they told me at the time, if it was an emergency access, we can give you some waivers on the permit, so we can make it official, okay? But, but also, I would like to suggest that the big issue out there is that hump, alright? And that was put, there's a long story behind this, I won't get into it, but I can just lower it, I just lower that manhole, and then, you know, it, it's pretty much, it's only in the layout, maybe a foot, and then I can just lower it. Great, it'd still have it, you know, the DOP doesn't want to want any water running from the side onto the road, but it'll be negligible, because it'll come up, and then the grude goes down. It, it goes, it's tilted towards.
Lowering the manhole at the top, you wouldn't be touching any of the inverts within the.
What's that?
You wouldn't be touching any of the inverts in the scepter itself, you just.
No, 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 I wouldn't affect any of the inverts.
Just making sure you had the proper.
No, no, I can just take the top off, get a smaller top, put it back on, and, and that whole issue will go by. And then I can repave that section and make it smooth and no bumps, and it'd be much more to use. And then I can, I'll then follow, follow-up permit, tell them what I did, you know, and just try to make it right, and I don't think there'd be an issue, but if we wait for DEP, it'll be a year. But I will do the paperwork afterwards, but I'd like to get it just taken out here this season. Okay?
Okay.
Alright. Yeah, I did put on my list here to talk about the homeowner on 938, who has, uses that.
939, right?
And I think that's between me and them, and I'll work that out with them, okay? But if we make it a one-way in, you know, I mean, they'll, they'll have no way to get out. In other words, they're right now using that access as a driveway to get back and forth in their house. So if they get, come in, come in the front, okay?
Come to the driveway right here, then they go out.
But if they, they're not supposed to go back out.
No, I know.
You know, so I gotta, I just have to have a sit-down, and there's a lot of issues around that, you know? I mean, the one thing I could do is just close off their access and tell them to do what their permit says, is get a driveway off of 138.
Well, their actual, their actual address is 939 Stonegate.
Yeah.
That is there, we can't just put a, we can't just put a driveway on a Somerset Ave.
We can't change the driveway on that, so that's their physical address.
Unless, I mean, that would depend on what the building permit looks like.
That's what I'm saying, the permit was issued to 939 Stonegate Landing, not 939 Somerset Ave. So the driveway has to go out to where the permit was issued.
I don't know, have you looked at the building permit that was actually issued?
Yes.
Not the address, but the.
Yeah, so this house was given a number, because this was brought to my attention a while back, and I did do look at this, it is, it is Stonegate Landing.
Right, but have you looked at the design, the actual plan, not the, not the address?
Just the address.
It'd be interesting to see what the plan was that was submitted for the permit.
Can we get that from Jim, Kerry, and just see what that's all about?
Marguerite, on that, that piece of property, they only, they didn't have enough frontage on Somerset Ave, and they required 150 feet to get a building permit, and then somehow, a permit, permit was issued, which was based on frontage on Stonegate Landing, which they had no right to, but they still gave them the permit.
I, I mean, I don't know when or where, but I would start by just taking a look at the permit and the plan that was issued, and then you will have an idea of dates and what was applied for, and application, and then from there, you can research what your options are.
Okay.
I have a complete file, and I can give you everything. Okay, and you can confirm.
Well, you can submit it to the board.
Only to the board, yeah.
Yeah, but, I mean, then you can get it from the town as well, but I think that would be the starting point. I don't know that this is really something the zoning board can do other than to flag it for the zoning enforcement officer to potentially take some action.
Right.
If there's action that's available to be taken. If there isn't, then that, that will need to be addressed with whatever.
Right.
happens here around the emergency access.
Right.
And that would have to be something you'd have to talk to DEP about, because I, I don't, it may be an easement, I mean, there may be some other types of things that would need to, an access easement of some sort, I don't know.
That's what I was just looking at, if we could get an easement for him on that property, now we are wide enough for a two-lane road. Because his property goes all the way to the cul-de-sac.
Yeah.
That might be, that might be something.
Depending on what ends up happening, because that.
Then we could rely on the DOT for the curb cut over here. Would you say the road is 12, 12-wide?
Well, most of the way it's.
16?
16 feet, I think it is, okay? But there's a section where they make the bend and narrows out.
Yeah, I see that there, yeah.
You can see it on the plan, you know, it's just the way they built it. It would be perfect to stop it right there.
That would solve all the problems.
I know, I know, it's possible.
And of course, the B A gate with the sign.
Table that one out.
Yeah, we'll table that one.
Yep, okay.
Alright, and the next thing, before we get down to your enumerated list, we have drainage.
Yes, yeah, the drainage, first, I, I want to tell you, I'm coming to every meeting in person, okay? The meeting we had in June with Sampson Watson, okay? I, when they made that terrific presentation, okay, I mean, they really, I mean, I was listening to it. You know, it's this one for review, okay?
Yep, yep.
Well, that wasn't available to me before the meeting, okay? They brought it with them. So they gave you all copies here, I'm sitting home, and I'm trying to figure it out, okay? And during the conversation somewhere, I said, I really need a copy of that, okay? And I thought they were going to send it. Okay, so that was that meeting, then we didn't meet in July, and I kind of forgot about it, alright? It wasn't until Kerry reminded me of the meeting and asked me if I'd come, just middle of last week, I said, yeah. So I went down, and I had all these things in my head, and I, I spent a day and a half writing a, that report was four pages long before, and then after I found this, I threw it all away except for that. So, you know, I gotta come, okay? I miss too much, alright? Anyway, so, yeah, with the drainage, the report's pretty good, and I, I agree with all of it, and I think they're right on it about, we have to clean the basins. And I want to talk about the basin number three, which is at the end of, what's this? You know, the end of Eagle Terrace.
Ah, yeah, Eagle Terrace, yeah.
Yeah, and that was a retention basin, wasn't designed to hold water. And, but over time, and I'm not sure how any of this happened, but the homeowners who had a child that challenged, and they made a playground out of it, okay? And I remember I went by a couple times, wow, that basin worked really good, there's never any water in it. Well, somewhere along the line, someone redirected the water away from the basement and flows directly into the woods, okay? And it ties back into the area where basin one is, where all the water off of Somerset Ave, you know, everywhere goes out there. Now, they make a couple recommendations. One is just, you know, notify the homeowner, take everything out, and there was some underground, they call them, they mentioned a couple, let me find, let me get this range.
Yeah, I think, I think what you wrote was, was drainage. Outfall, downfall number three basin located behind 518 Eagle Terrace, Lot 29. Order the homeowners to remove playground equipment and reconfigure it to function as its original design or modify it as suggested by Weston and Sampson.
Yeah, so what they're looking for is below that basin, okay? So, and now, you know, the drainage was lowered all through Stonegate during this whole process, and I'll give you a little more detail later, but now, they've got the basin. I, I'd like to go out, your permission to go out there and talk to them, and there'll be expense connected with it. But there is, and Sampson, Weston and Sampson gives, gives you a roadmap to what to do back there. And I have to get some prices on it, but I'd like to give that a shot and bring it to you guys. And if everyone's happy that works, and then we just let them keep the basin, that's the approach I'd like to take, provided we can make sure the drainage works as indicated in Weston and Sampson. I'd like to look at that first.
I mean, it's not so much needing our permission to go out there, you would definitely need permission of the homeowner, but it's.
Well, the, you know, the, the, somebody owns the basin or has an easement on it, so I have your right to go there and take it out, but I'd like to handle it a little bit. Friendly, I guess, you know? And if I could do that. And the only other thing with drainage is on down, at the end of Eagle Terrace, at the bottom, the, the catch basin that catches all the water and sends it out back is a couple inches above grade, okay? And they remarked that, you know, maybe when we finish to put the top coat on it, we can get it up. I think for the short term, I should just lower that catch basin top, so, so there's no more ponding, and then when we come back up the top coat, we can bring it up again. It'll get rid of the issue. I mean, if I pave it, it's just gonna, well, we'll have to dig it all out when we top coat it, you know?
Greg, do you have any comments on that?
It'll get the water off the streets for the, for the winter.
Okay.
Okay, and the other thing I want, so we get that.
Then you have five bullet points for discussion, we can take.
Oh, I'd like a couple more.
Oh, okay, good.
Okay?
Yep, sure.
So, when it comes to, and I, I'm going to tie this into the pavement, okay? When it comes to paving, okay, and raising structures, if we start now, we start raising structures, okay? Where's catch basins? If we don't get to pave it before the season's over, they're going to be, it'll be a nuisance all winter, and there'll be water all over it, okay? We can do the manholes, because we can, we can put a ring around them. It's a little bit of a problem with snow trucks, but, but, yeah, when snow, when you're sticking up an inch and a half for the finish quote, and the plows come through, they get ripped apart. And we can't raise the basins because it'll flood out the street, so I just want to make you aware of that. So, and one, one thing I can want to jump to is the pavement, and this wraps me up with this.
Is that under discussion, you had, so there's five bullet points, the fourth one says, will winter, winter, will winter paving be allowed?
Right.
I assume that's.
The thing that is, is that it used to be, we shut down November 15th, and we didn't open up till April 15th. So, that's a lot of time with raised structures and things like that. I mean, we can certainly go ahead with the cleaning up their retention basins and, and getting everything ready to go. But paving, where it's getting so late, and we're already steering at September, and if they, you know, I gotta get with, talk to the police chief, fire chief, get Sampson to approve a lot of things, and it's just not going to happen by then, alright? Because one of the things I have to do, talk to, he points out all the, on existing pavement.
Yeah.
He gives us a lot of pictures, alright? We got cracking, we got this, we got that.
Yep.
So I want to permission to talk directly, Weston and Sampson, and what's their best way to repair it? Because right now, they're saying we shouldn't put any top coat on until we repair all those cracks and that sort of thing, okay? And one of the, you did, when we did the, the borings out there, okay? I think, you look at, this is, I might be jumping around too much. Let me get back to the pavement. Okay, if you look to the, the, on this section where we start with the existing pavement.
Yep.
Okay? And this will be easier to explain, you ordered one, two.
Yep.
Three, okay, the four. Two, three. I think I skipped a paragraph. Alright, actually, it's page two of the borings. And that gives you a, a, based in the, the plant, the original plan called for an instant after base, and then it's after top.
Yeah.
And almost everywhere in, we're exceeding that now, you know? Anywhere from, in a few spots, one inch up to three inches. So if I, I think that gives me the, look at those sections and talk to Weston Sampson, and just, I think, dig them out, match them up to the original grade, make sure they're at least an inch and a half, and then we can, it'll be, we add the top and, and the whole thing will be done.
I would also suggest, I don't know, if we would, we would reach out, or you would reach out, but to Tom Ferry, Greg, for his thoughts on paving in the winter?
Yeah, so, the only time, like, pavement, like he said, that the plant's too closed, sometimes late October, November, unless the state has a job going, and it's a mild winter, they, they do stay open here and there.
They do?
Yeah, asphalt's really generally done in the fall, you don't want to do it after that. Especially trying to cure between, you're trying to reuse the existing blacktop you have down now as a subbase? You're going to leave that?
Let's ask her.
You're going to leave the existing infrastructure material as a subbase? Could you see the geo report?
Okay, go ahead, find the, pull you to what we got.
So we have a geo report on your gravel and on your subbase accounts. The infrastructure, you've seen that?
And they have, they had the SIP.
Yep.
And the current DOT, there's no more than 10% bathtub, and we're, we're running around 20, 30, spike one spot.
Yeah, I see, not one area.
Yeah, but the thing of it is, if this, that work was done 20 years ago, back then, it met the requirements of DOT. They tightened everything up over the last 20 years. And, you know, I think that if the town had to go out and replace the pavement. And, you know, I think that if the town had to go out and replace the pavement, I don't think you do a SIP test and dig up all that material just to comply with a 10%. I mean, that was, it more than met the standards back in 20, 2004. And so, if this project had been finished 10 years ago, it would be long gone, and, you know, they would have flown with it, okay? But...
Yeah, but it wasn't done 10 years, 20 years ago, it's being done now. So, what their recommendation on this is, you do pass at the 10%, and I understand you wanna cover it, but you had mentioned something that you wanted to reach out to Sampson. The only reason why Sampson, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, was just the town was gonna hire an engineer firm, which we have, to go out there and take a look at your infrastructure, give a report back. At that point, I don't think there's any question that you can use Sampson. I don't think there's a conflict of interest, I think you still could use them.
No, that was part of the whole agreement, Tom, that he would be using them, and not a third. He wants to go out and find his third.
And it would save money in the whole end of the, in what's going on. So it looks like the asphalt does meet the minimum requirements of today, even though it would have met 20 to 30% back in 2004, what he's talking about. The only question, couple concerns I have is over on Eagle Terrace. A couple of the basins are not even hooked up to the prop, the basin number five in the back there.
Yeah.
They're saying they're missing pipe.
Missing what?
There's no pipe, that's why that's not, it's not, it was supposed to go to the D10 tanks that are behind there. We don't know if the tanks are there, because there's no pipe to excavate to find. So what it's showing me, as I'm reading it, it looks like the basin number five, somebody took a pipe out of that, redirected from going to the storm scepters that were under the ground into the wetland. That's the, that's how I'm reading B5, alright? So it looks like B5 is gonna need some addressing back there in regards to, that's not about your asphalt though, that's about drainage. You know, your asphalt, realistically, ain't the issue there. When you were saying B5's really moving water right out, no problem, it's not holding. One of the lower points, and it's actually in the driveway, if I'm not mistaken, of the house, am I right? It's almost in the driveway.
I think so.
So B5. Yeah, so this was supposed to have a pipe that went into a D box.
No, no, actually, the pipe was always around the front end line, and then it diverted.
And it never got diverted, it went continuously, well, they, when they scoped it, they said it was unfounded. Unfounded.
Unbounded?
Yeah, so they didn't see it. So, maybe that's, but that, as for the asphalt, if everybody's asking about what's going on with that, I do agree with him. If he can get the asphalt and the pitches of the drainage to go in proper locations without changing elevations of the inlets and outlets by raising and lowering the manhole cover tops, I don't see that to be an issue. However, there is a few issues in, on Eagle Terrace that will have to be addressed. As I hate to see you do the blacktop work out here, and we gotta dig it up again. And, and you say there is an easement there? On B5, you mentioned there's an easement to get out to the D10 pond where the swing sets on?
An easement to get back?
Yeah, if you have, you have an easement.
Yeah, they, the pipe?
Sewer or water easement to get, to run out to the back there?
Well, we had to put a pipe in. The whole design of that retention basin, beginning, was to run a pipe off of it.
And into storm scepters.
Yeah, and then that house was built many years ago.
Yeah, so I think what's, what, what I've been reading and speaking with these guys and going through all that information, I don't think they think the storm scepters, or the whatever you wanna take, say the tanks, have ever been hooked up.
I don't think so either.
So it went into the water of, I've been back there with you, and it went out into the wetland.
Yeah, you were there with them.
But it never returned, and went back into the storm scepters, and then it was supposed to go, and that's where the swing set is. So there is gonna be some kind of excavational work being done on that property, I don't know.
I agree.
How we have to, I don't think the board has anything to say on that. I mean, I don't know how that can be approached with the homeowners, and I don't have a set of drawings to see if there is an easement back there. I would say there should be.
Well, once you copy on the back of the lot, all the property belongs to Stone Gate.
Yeah.
Once you get past the lot line, we own everything.
However, that, that, those storm scepters are on the land.
I believe that.
Yeah, so where it tables and goes flat, beyond the tree line is obviously yours, and that's all wet. And then where that particular property is, the topography, the land goes down, everything's diverted, like it was never gonna go to that flat area, it was all to go to, to the, the wetland, which makes sense when you do the swell off the house. But what he's saying, from what I understood, I could be incorrect, and I'll check into this, is he said it was unfounded, that it actually went to there, he thinks it goes straight out. So that would be something we gotta address on that.
But on, on the winter paving, after the question of will it be allowed, I mean, sure, but...
So findings on this say that it does meet the requirements of the minimum. Obviously, wanna get with Tommy Ferry and have him review this as well.
Okay, that's what I was gonna say next.
But it does meet the requirement of 2024 by the 10% value, which it does, it's all says it in here by Sampson.
Wait, when I first read that, my concern was the quality of work that would be done during the winter, not because of who was doing it, but because of the weather conditions.
Sure.
If it's gonna be a role that the town's gonna take on, I don't want it to be, have done, if they say, well, you guys didn't do it during the best time of the year, that's why I didn't know there was work for you to Tom Ferry.
We're gonna do it all the way up until November.
November, okay. So I, I would say, if so, winter, I would say no, but November is fine.
There was a few...
Especially if you're saying that asphalt is better, you know...
He also said asphalt, and then there's, isn't there lighting on that, going around the street too, that's not in? Lights?
Lights.
Outside lights on the poles around the property, wasn't there lighting, or is it just trees?
I mean, we do have a street, to be discussed at some...
Trees, but I want to say there's lights. And those lights are ran by the homeowner, or they ran on a line down, it's supposed to be the sidewalk.
Initially, they were connected to the homeowner, and they were responsible.
Shutting them on and off, I remember the step.
Right.
But then, a change, when I came to it, we, we got solar lights.
Okay.
That don't cost anything.
Sure.
You put them in, they go on and on.
So there's no underground wiring, is what I'm getting at?
Well, I see what you're saying.
I just wanna make sure all that wasn't bad.
But anything we've done since then, solar, and truthfully, we publish it more out there, you know? Some of them have, and some of them don't have.
I was just more worried about you doing asphalt on the road, and we got a trench down the side of a brand new road to put wiring for lighting.
Right.
We don't need that.
Okay.
I see what you're saying now.
If anything, would be solar.
And the only other option thing that you had said, mentioned out of coming up next would be the trees.
Trees, yeah.
Which is outside the sidewalk. Is there a sidewalk here? Yes.
That's what I, that's one of my discussions. This, this project, as it grew back in '04, '06, had a three, just a three foot wide sidewalk on the north side of the road.
Yep.
And with a simple cape car for it.
Right.
And, you know, today, well, you didn't, okay, you know, but, and I must, I can tell you that any, all the kids in Stone Gate, they ride the bikes up and down, there's no traffic, it's not anywhere, okay? And one of the concern, and I'm just bringing this up, that it's, it's not a very expensive sidewalk, but the way people have, where people have planted, you know, bushes and landscaped and everything else, okay? We're just gonna have to go right down and go back, you know?
So there is, one side of the road is supposed to have a sidewalk.
One side, yes.
I think so.
And I do know what you were talking about, there's someone that has put a fence where the sidewalk's gonna go, that's gonna be an issue. I do, I did see some of the concerns that he has, particularly right here, where this cul-de-sac is, there's a fence that's, he has no room to put the sidewalk.
Yeah, I know, yeah, I saw it today, actually.
Alright, so there's gonna be a few miscellaneous things that are probably gonna stir up some more stuff we have to do.
Does it, does it show in their lot?
What's that?
In the lot plans for the, where the sidewalks are supposed to be? Does it show in each, each of the homeowner's lot plan, does it show a sidewalk?
It doesn't, no.
So they might have...
The plot, it's an asphalt showing what's on the ground right there.
So they may have been under the impression there was never gonna be a sidewalk there.
Exactly, it's not like they did it intentionally.
Yeah, that's...
Oh, no, I must have just not did.
Yeah, I know, by any means, it's just something...
That's gonna become a whole nother...
That's another avenue.
Can of worms.
You guys in charge, I, you know, it, it doesn't seem to me that they need or...
Do they have a record of the comprehensive permit for, I know we do some of that.
I didn't happen to bring it with me, but...
Yeah, because I believe we allow one sidewalk on this one, usually it's two sides.
Because if you're suggesting now that we don't do a sidewalk, that's gonna be a change.
It's gonna be, is it a major, or is it not? We have to come to that decision.
Right.
I think that, and also maybe a question for the 40B MHFA.
If there's a condition involving any of the things that you're talking about right now, that is not being followed, you would need to put in a modification request, the comprehensive permit. I believe that the waiver for one sidewalk is also a waiver granted from the planning board regs for this roadway, so, you know, again, yes, I understand the ASBOL plans show what's on the ground, but you need to get a modification for your permit, it won't be able to be closed out. A modification to the comprehensive permit, because you can't close the permit out. You are required to have a sidewalk on one side of the road unless your permit is modified.
If the board would lean that way, I'll, I'll file for modification.
No, we can't.
So that's, I guess, a question, you know, are you, are you able to put a sidewalk in anywhere?
Well, there's plenty of room to put it.
I know.
It's just that where it was intended, you know, the sort of by the house, roads here, they just go around.
No, I understand the problem. But are you able to construct a sidewalk anywhere on the property without interfering with what people have already constructed on their land?
No.
Nowhere, there's no...
Either side of the road? I know right now you had the north, but on the other side of the road, you can't either?
It's the same situation either side, okay? I mean, we could move it to the other side, which is a shorter run.
So that, that's what I was gonna...
Well, that's, that's not out of the, that's not, it's not, it's not worth discussing, but...
Yeah, so if we had the sidewalk here, and then we had them do the violation on the new pavement, and stepped it on this side to come around, it would still be a continuous sidewalk to all properties, but I, I don't, I really never looked at all the rest, but I know there was a small situation in here. Out here, this property here, this house here, you can see the approachment of the dirt. So that's all gonna disappear, and that's gonna change the pitch of that driveway and that person's job, because he's gonna have a shovel, probably 10 inches.
The current, well, he may have to be kept active now.
Yeah, so, but his driveway does this, or her driveway does this, and if we take that out, we're gonna be this high, that whole driveway's gonna have to be redesigned.
It'll be an issue.
We do have some other issues that are not, that I know of.
And a lot of people repaved their driveway, and the contract is supposed to be...
No, I know.
Well, that's how...
But i- i- in terms of, you're just discussing right now, yes or no for the sidewalk, we can't really, we, we can discuss, but we, we can't
I don't think...
Give any direction until this, until this...
Jonathan made a point, I don't think we can change that on a 40B.
Well, unless it requests to modify the permit.
Well, isn't it more of a safety and public issue?
It may be, it may be a public safety issue.
I'm not sure, so we have to look into it.
Right, that's why you need to apply for the modification.
Yeah.
And you need to explore it, you'll need to get the input. I mean, initially, if the modification is applied for, the board would make a determination as to whether or not it's a major or minor change. In this case, it would probably not be, fall within the requirements to be considered a major change, you wouldn't necessarily open the public hearing, but your 40B rules and regulations allow you to approve modification requests or deny them, and to approve them with conditions. So you could still indicate that you would, and you would want to obtain the input from public safety personnel.
That modification to this permit, would that have to go out to all the owners again for their, to come in and have their input on this?
If it's a minor, no.
So...
Well, it'd be...
This would be a major, this would be a major.
If it's considered a major versus a minor.
If it's a major change, then you would, you would have a public hearing, and if that's, and that may be the better route, you know, that could be agreed to, too, you could just do it through a public hearing.
I feel better with that, because there's multiple people here that have violent, that it's gonna interfere with their property to do this.
I, I wouldn't feel right discussing it without, without any public hearing.
That's a big problem. Just to go big to cul-de-sac.
It's not only how it's gonna interfere with the property in some cases, it's compensation as well, potentially. It could get into a whole...
And then the playgrounds right here, so I mean...
A whole can of things.
So, yeah, in terms of the sidewalk discussion, I think it's probably not worth having too much more about it until we have a formal request before us. I personally would feel better it being, it being a public hearing, that's something that I would definitely want.
I think it'd be better for all parties.
So Mr. Fedorov, if you were willing, you would file a request for a modification in order to eliminate the requirement to have a sidewalk on one side of the road, and that you would waive the consideration as to whether or not this is a major or minor change? You would agree that it's a major change, and you would ask to have it scheduled for a public hearing?
That way, people can talk, say, I don't want it, because it's gonna do this, I don't want it, because it's gonna do that.
Right, I don't know how they'll feel, they might say, I understand, I wish we had it, but it's gonna require us to do this, then I, I, I mean, I don't live there, they do.
It's gonna be an expense to some of these people.
I prefer, prefer to hear what they have to say on it.
Sure, I, I feel comfortable with that.
Okay. So we hit...
But a lot of people, when they buy a house anywhere, they think they own right up the street. Well, why is that Sony name is, is 20TB, the layout is 50TB? So, even a 14 foot, they don't own.
Yeah, I noticed some of the light poles are like in yards, they're not even on the street.
So...
I did, yeah.
The boxers out there, they're way bad.
Seeing as that, 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 this kinda has to go along with what we're talking about, why don't we talk about number three next, which is street trees? What, if you want to elaborate on what you have, I mean, all you wrote here are street trees, and that's fine, but what comments do you have to make on that?
Again, a lot of people that planted their trees, I think I would like to throw you, you should have put lights on everyone's driveway, and maybe eliminate the trees, I don't, you know, they...
What, what do you mean by street trees?
Well, you know...
Just like...
So, right outside, right outside the sidewalk.
Well, it has to be on here, probably.
Yeah, which would...
Way bad.
So then you have, I think that's Mr. Ferry, that does the trees, designing the trees.
He's the tree ward, I'm sure.
Yeah, so, and there were certain types of trees that were probably on the permit as well.
I'm sure there probably were, I mean, I don't remember if I was there.
I think they gave three different style trees that could go on the property. And they were staggered and marked on the, on the permit.
So that could, that might be another modification, yeah.
So this is why we're talking about it.
No, yeah, that's fine.
I really think that what, you should get all your ducks in a row, everything you're thinking that you wanna do, and we can go from there, because if you go in front of us and you're not gonna deny it's not a major change to comprehensive permit, we could put the street trees in, we could listen to the public in that neighborhood, hear what they have to say, and then make a decision from there. I don't feel comfortable pulling stuff out.
I think if you...
No, 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 no.
And if you can also pull it together in the same package, so that we're doing, we're not doing two or three...
Well, it's, yeah.
Sidewalk, yeah.
We'll do one modification, okay, to be done.
Well, we'll carry it, that would be more than, it would be more than one modification, because...
It's, it'd be a request to modify the comprehensive permit, but with each modification that you're seeking, you have to identify which, which condition you're talking about and create proposed language. That doesn't mean, that's part of what, in order to file it properly, that's what needs to be submitted. So you're gonna have to identify all of the conditions that are involved and submit proposed language. It may or may not be what the board actually ultimately agrees to, but, you know, you could say, condition 40, let's say that's the one about the sidewalks, you're proposing that it be eliminated in its entirety. Okay, but at least we know. Or maybe you're proposing to modify it, like if there is one, I'm not sure there is one for street trees, I honestly don't remember all of them off the top of my head, but...
It is there.
Maybe you're proposing that instead of street trees, that you install lamp posts or light posts or something.
Yeah, and I'm not sure where the, the lamp post came from, I'm not sure that was in the original, maybe either, okay? We just started doing that, and then...
But you've got to look at the actual language of the condition.
I gotta look at that, too.
You've got to identify the numbers that you're talking about, and the, and how it's been modified, and then you're going to need to come up with proposed language. And I think what the board is...
Can I ask a question?
Sure, yeah.
What, what, what lamp posts are we talking about?
What, he, he wants to know what lamp posts are we talking about?
At the beginning of the project, okay, and I was nowhere near it.
Before you came on board, right?
Yeah, they were putting a lamp post, okay, tied back into the house. The homeowner is responsible for connecting the power system, and there was a system, it went on and off, okay? And, and then, back to 2012, I talked to the ZB at the time, and we modified it, the hub was I started doing, to putting a single post where it was supposed to be.
Yep.
But make it LED with a, you know, a...
Solar. Solar, right, yep.
They could find two of them at the playground, okay, when I did that, and, and, and then, I'm not sure why we, yeah, I do, yeah, but I honestly think that, and that one for safety, it's not much lightening, okay, and.
I mean, I don't wanna get in too much discussion about the details on without, of the question before us, but.
Okay.
Um, well, you, now, you have also number one, a school, a school bus turnaround, what did you wanna discuss regarding that?
Okay, so, this is one thing the neighbors are asking for.
Okay.
When we did the playground, okay, uh, there was a condition that I had to install a school bus turnaround, and I can show you where it is, yeah, right there.
That's, well, that's the playground, yep.
So they've been living there, some of them, for fifteen years, and the school buses, them sent it, they drive in, goes down the circle, goes back to Eagle, and goes right back up. So now, if the school bus, it's not, it's just a, not a shed, but it's, it's not a.
Like an overhang kind of, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and we, we paved it, so they could go in to around, go up, that would need, everyone who was way down the other end would have to walk to be fit up the school.
So right now, the.
Door to door.
Right now, the school bus goes on to this property?
Not, not property, but it, it goes, so, so right now, the bus, if my pen is the bus, it goes all the way down?
All the way down to the park, all the way, they turned around that hall of a sack.
Yep.
And on equal terrace is only three houses, they walk up to the top of the street.
So the kids who live here walk to here, and the bus stops here, picks up those three houses.
What's that necessary?
So wait a minute, what grades are we talking about? And the reason I'm asking is because the middle school and the high schoolers can have a single bus stop, the elementary kids are in front of their home usually.
Well, that's what most, has, has the open and up, we have a lot of little kids in there.
Right, yeah.
And, um, and that's what I'm really, it's really, parents with.
Younger kids.
Five, six, seven years ago.
Right, it's under, so.
Even the teenagers, they can walk.
Well, the teenagers do walk, the teenage, the buses do not pick the teenagers up in front of their door, the buses go, go to the bus stop that's designated, it's the elementary school kids up through grade five that where it's door to door.
So, the, the residents are, are, are asking for a turnaround?
Well, I've talked to everybody, especially with kids, you know, they tell, don't ever do that, you know, I mean, there happen to be some little kids right across, you know, they're right across your feet, well, you know. I guess it's a can be issue, okay, and a lot of, you know, you don't know who's gonna be the next kid living in the house at the end of the street, that's the thing.
So, I guess my question is, is this something that the residents are asking for and you don't want, and, and your opinion is to not do it, or you want to do it and you just want to know if it's okay to do it?
I, I, I'm indifferent, okay.
Okay.
I haven't talked to anybody about this for three years, but at one point I was talking to Maglia, everybody was asking me, and I wrote a letter that we were gonna send to the superintendent to find out whether they can.
Right, I do remember that now a little bit.
Is there a condition that says you have to do this?
I was, John, I was just gonna ask that.
I'm not finding it in here, but I, I'm not finding it in here right now, but I feel like there was.
But there was, too.
Was it in the two thousand twelve one?
It had to be, after it wasn't fifty five.
Right, you know what, that's what it is, because this was fifty five and older, I gotta go to the two thousand twelve one.
Right.
Wouldn't have been kids.
Wouldn't be then, I.
So, I mean.
Well, there could have been, but you know what I'm saying.
It's, I mean, I think then that's something that, again. Would have to be a request, if it is part of, and I believe it is possibly a request, so.
Multiple areas of us can make a move.
Um, so.
I, I can bring that up directly, the homeowners, you know, because it's a.
Well, if it's a condition, you can't, if it's a condition, you're looking for a modification again.
Right, and I think once we have more of a, once it's before us as a formal modification, then we can reach out to the superintendent and see what, what their opinion is on it. So, I guess while we're waiting for that, you have number five on here, removal of phase B from the comprehensive permit.
Yes, sir, I'm retired, I'm thirty seventy five, I'm two hundred and ten, I don't like this, I have another session.
So, Marguerite.
I just, I wanna, I wanna do something with it, but, and I, I had, you know, what started all of this, I was gonna sell that backland and then that.
Right.
But it just felt, uh, okay, no, I, I'm using lamp or something, you know, maybe, uh, retreat lots, okay, anything, anything that doesn't require our quality.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's a big reason why we have Marguerite here to discuss, so, one of the things, obviously, we cannot vote on this tonight, 'cause we don't have it before us, but removal of phase B from the comprehensive permit, it's something that he's looking to do, what?
Yeah, I mean, it's not really all that feasible to do, it's the comprehensive permit, you can not, you don't have to build it, you're not required to build it.
Right.
But you can't necessarily take that land and then now be able to use it individually, you have, that land is part of what was permitted with this comprehensive permit, you can. Sell to another applicant or developer, they can take over, you know, as long as they're given permission to be deemed a, um, and a proper applicant, they can take over, or they, they can either take over your LLC and become a partner somehow, or they can apply and get permission from the board. They can come in with a modification, you were starting to go down that road, the problem you have right now, Richard, with that process that was happening, is that you haven't finished phase A.
Right.
And so you've got to finish phase A, but there's no obligation that you build phase B, as long, if you don't want to pursue phase B, you don't have to, you can leave it as it is, it just is not able to be developed further. Other than in accordance with the comprehensive permit, unless it's further modified, and at this stage, the board is looking to try to just get phase A resolved, um.
Well, one of the things with me is that I pay a lot of taxes on that backland, I'm never gonna build houses on, you know, I put, you know, I mean, it, but, this came up about four years ago, and one of the things you said at that time is that. The only reason I could do anything to that is because, um, the forty B gave me access to it, I've did a lot of research, okay, the developer before they did this project had. Already had access before they ever filed for a forty B, and I was gonna bring that to your attention.
But the problem is that the forty B took all of this land, and they provided zoning, there was waivers on zoning, and there was numbers of homes that were agreed to within all of this land, you can't then. The way that the forty B law works, it's not intended to allow people to take a large tract of land, often, much of which is often undevelopable, certainly not able to be developed to the extent that it gets developed under forty B, very often landlocked in, in many components. You can't take that, create phasing out of it, and then, once you have started to construct the first phase, say, now I have all this wonderful access, I wanna do something different with the rest of it. It is part of the comprehensive permit, the entire piece of land, so it's tied up in that.
You know, we did the first, we're involved, and we did the, uh, it was age restriction, I asked to have the age restriction done, okay.
Could you have him come up and address this?
The Z B A then reduced the number of units from seventy two to fifty eight.
Uh, Mr. Fedorov, do you mind scooting the microphone for us, so we can, oh, sorry. It's fine, it's all right.
Yeah, when they, uh, I got involved, and, uh, it, when I got involved, there was fifty five and over, and there were, after the first five years, there were five houses built, 'cause everybody on the planet was building age restricted projects. So, when I got involved, I got involved with the, uh, with the, only after the age restriction was removed, and so when we, um, so we would've had seventy two, um, non-age restricted, but at that time, this board reduced that number. And eliminated a number of forty B homes, for whatever reason, I don't know.
Yeah, that's 'cause you went for more bedrooms.
What's that?
More bedrooms.
Well, yeah, um, but.
Do more bedrooms.
But they never asked me to, we never, yeah, so, it's complicated, I just know that there's a better use of the property, we could, we could do a farm. Can I do a farm, raise the grapes, come on, everyone likes it, I'll give free wine to the whole board.
Richard, the left, the property is.
Richard.
Property is tied up by the comprehensive permit.
All right, let's, let me do a little take, I just brought it up.
I think, what I'm hearing is that, now, first of all, before any discussion can be had about phase B, you have to finish phase A, that's the first thing.
Yeah. I'm good with that.
Even if it's sold, you know, to another company for forty B development, you have to finish phase A, period, so if that's the case, this, even having the discussion, happy birthday, by the way, in a few days, but, but, it's premature.
Yeah. Okay, okay, I just, all right, forget it, move on, okay, I just wanted to mention, I really, you know, um.
I, I understand, but.
Yeah, all right, and, uh.
So, I, I do have some other concerns about what I was hearing, um, and I'm not sure, you know, obviously, yes, we've talked about that there will need to be a modification request filed, there's a process for doing that, Richard, there's information you have to present, you have to identify conditions, come up with proposed language, you're going, the board is. I think you've agreed to, they've asked that you just skip the vote on whether it's a major or modify, minor modification, and agree to go to a public hearing on all of this, so you could file all of that, and typically, whatever that date is, we may need a slight waiver on when that public hearing gets scheduled, because it's done by agreement. There's been a memorandum put out by Weston and Sampson that has some recommendations in it, you've started to address some of them, they have some concerns, so, for instance, one of the things that I noticed with the paving piece. Is that they don't believe that any paving should happen over the existing subbase, so I don't think that it's a great idea, I mean, I think you've gotta come up and work with them around the subbase, um, and what.
All the holes, all the areas, yeah, it's quite a bit.
I have to get close.
No, you can come, I, I know you need to hear, so I understand that.
I'm like, yeah.
All right.
So, this, for, there is a, one of the things that they showed us was around the paving.
Yep.
And they said, in one of their recommendations, sorry.
That's strange, you have to get to where they talk.
Thank you, I'm in the wrong spot.
They should take it out, though.
Yeah. Right after the board. It's the third one from the back. Third from the back?
No, it's not that.
Here it is, numerous areas of pavement distress were observed during the visual assessment, therefore paving over the existing pavement is not recommended.
That is, I believe that there is issues with the pavement right now, the cracking and things like that, they want me to fix that first before I pave it.
Right.
That's, so that's what we're gonna do.
Okay, so when is that being done? Because I was hearing conversation about paving, but I wasn't hearing any conversation about this.
Oh, no, no, we can't do any paving until we correct the, the issues, they identify, this is what it is.
Yes, I remember the picture, when are you doing that?
Yeah. Um, well, oh, again, you, um, yeah, this, this is cracking, okay, so I'm gonna talk to them, and typically you do here, that's someone trying to put it, it's on the roof, yeah, this is all gonna have to be cut out, repaved, before we do any of the final stuff.
Right.
Okay, that's what we need to do.
So, right, so I guess I felt like the conversation tonight was a little bit too advanced.
Okay.
Because I think we need to start addressing some of these pieces first, and, and I, I mean, I understand that, you know, it's been the summer, people have had vacations and they've been away, but. I'm hoping that at least no later than the next meeting, you're going to be able to go through each of these findings and have worked with Weston and Sampson and come up with a plan, and, and hopefully started implementing a plan on some of them.
Well, you know, we, first one I bought was Weston Sampson back in March, we didn't have a meeting till the end of June, and we had a month off.
Well, we had, the board had a month off, but that didn't mean there needed to be a month off of any work being done.
Well, we, I needed to have this meeting with board.
Okay.
Okay, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, but I'm just concerned, because the, the conversation tonight was on final paving, and we hadn't, weren't really talking about the steps that needed to be done to get to that.
One of the subjects I, uh, initially asked is that if I raise all the structures, okay, um, do you allow winter paving, okay, usually the plants close, and the discussion was that, let's wait on that until you would talk, but if I can still raise, I can't. I, I can raise, um, if I stop raising the structure right now, and we get a bed, won't it all get ripped up?
So I, I heard that, I did hear that, and I understand that, but if the answer to that is, I will handle, I'll take care of this in the spring, then that's what you're, you know, that's the plan, but I think the board needs you to sit down with each of these recommendations and say, this is what my, my plan is. And some of that's going to require engineering approval to be happening along the way, now, I know some of that involves communication with Weston and Sampson, you've asked that they kind of just do the approval and the review all as one, so you're not having it peer reviewed, and we've got to confirm that they're willing to do that, I understand that. But I'm hoping that you're actually coming up with a plan, this is what I want to do, and we need to take that to Weston and Sampson.
I'm here for the plan.
Right, the board doesn't need to, this, you, with all due respect, this is not your expertise, your experts would be your engineers, so, the conversation really needs to be happening between Richard and the engineer, and they need to develop a plan to address all of these, these pieces. And then, in the same time, you're hearing that there probably is going to need to be some modification requests coming in.
Right.
That will need to be addressed, does it make sense to do them piecemeal or all as one? It probably makes more sense to do them all as one, as you've started to do the work and you've realized where you're at. Some of your arguments and, and justifications, you know, the board is not, has never been insensitive to the fact that we, we take a, we take a development where it's at. They're not looking to place blame necessarily, they're just taking the development where it's at, but they, I think at this stage, it's time to start getting the work done.
I think where I put this out of control is I was thinking even beyond when I paved it, okay, right now, I still have six houses to build in phase one, I'm not building anything right now, I'm concentrating on this part of it, okay? I might do something, but I wanna get it over with, too, okay, and there's these other issues, and, you know, and so if, like, the school bus turnaround, if I have that, there's a little curbhead along the road in two places, so before I talk code it permanent, I didn't know that we're gonna do this or that, but we have the winter to do that, and but.
Yeah, but we had, we started in the spring, we thought we had the spring, and we haven't, I have not seen, I've seen a report, I haven't seen anything around work, I, absolutely, the emergency access road, that's a conversation that needs to be talked about with the board.
We have that, okay.
That was, that made sense to me tonight, the board needs to provide some input, you're saying you wanna, you don't have the space, you need to keep it one way, that makes a lot of sense, yes, go back and talk to public safety, but some of this stuff has been sitting there since, you know, the end of June, I'm concerned we're now getting ourselves back into the winter, and it's so easy to say, we have the winter to, to get this done and to get all of this work lined up. We said that last year, and that's my only concern.
But what we can do, anytime of the year, is do the improvements, the retention basin and the drainage, that can be done anytime, okay, and getting answers squared away, and then, and deciding all these other things, and I, I know when I talk to Sampson, they're gonna give me a recommendation, rip it out, we can do that, I can pass all of those things this season, okay?
So that would, my suggestion would be that you connect with Weston and Sampson, and you get some of the work done, and the stuff that needs to wait, that the, the work that you're able to get done is, as a showing of goodwill, the showing of establishing a relationship with Weston and Sam, Sampson, you've come in and explained to the board that we may have to wait on some of this until the spring, and we'll use the winter to line up all of the permits, so that when those, you know, asphalt plants open in April, we're, by April or May, we're going to be doing the work that needs to be done around the street.
Yeah, and, and like the, the paving top coat, I need to get some issues squared away before I get a price on it, so I can know what they're quoting, so, for what it's worth, that's the whole reason here, okay, but I don't intend to sit on it, but we, we can do, we can address the drainage, we can address the pavement issues, and I think I can, if we gotta go on the, on the winway end, I can cut that pavement back, that's only six feet, okay? There's a lot of little things we can get done, but that'll improve everything, and then, through the winter, then I'll know what, what, uh, modifications I want, we can get that through, and so as soon as that we open up in the spring, and I can't say on April fifteenth, 'cause everybody wants to open that, but I can get a, a contract lined up, I know what he's pricing out, I'll know whether he's, we're doing a sidewalk, we're not doing a sidewalk, and all this stuff, so I can get it done, but without all those answers, and I, I'm sorry if you thought I was putting, I'm not, I wanna get what we can during the winter, and then, then we'll have a couple of meetings to talk about modifications, and then I'll have a go plan for the paver and everybody else.
Right, so I, my, that's what, what I would recommend as well, and I think. Right. So I, my, that's where, what I would recommend as well. And I think that at this stage, there needs to be some actual activity and chi, and work being done out there. Not just for this board to see, but for the homeowners to see so that people understand that you are, you are committed to getting this done. And you've told us that for multiple times and you've shown up to, to every meeting that you've been asked to be at, but now the board needs to hear that you're getting the work done.
I'm ready to go, okay? And I can tell you that the project looks, looks better than right now than it's ever been. I'm taking care of entrances, a lot of things. No one's complaining about anything. Everyone seems to be happy.
I mean, I know we have some of the butters, one in person and a few on Zoom, so with the last few moments, not last moments, you know, to wrap this conversation up, do you have any, any comments or? Is it farthest line?
Oh, there, there.
Yeah, it's to make yourself be heard. That's, yeah, that's, yeah, I know, I'm sorry.
You can stay here so you can hear me, Richard.
This is, yeah.
So nine four seven Stone Gate Landing, Lisa Parkett. I've been coming to these, all these meetings because my yard floods.
What happened?
My yard is flooding.
In, in the Weston Sampson report.
Can I finish?
Mr. Fedorov, let her speak, please, so we can hear her.
So, um, who was I? So my yard floods, the winter's coming. Every year it's worse. I don't agree with the engineering because I did send pictures to Carrie on March twenty-seventh and June twenty-sixth showing the flooding in two thousand ten. So I basically want to know what you're going to do about it, if anything will be done.
But you need to work on the problem.
I do.
But you have created some issues, just like you've done.
But that problem was there before the driveway and before the trees. It was there six months after I moved in. I have pictures to prove it.
I haven't seen any of that.
Carrie?
I forwarded. But I can bring them up?
Before we move on.
Yeah.
Weston Sampson reported.
I, I sent the pictures to Carrie to send to them again because this problem existed in March of two thousand ten.
Wait, were you there?
Yes.
I think you were even here when she showed pictures. I know, I know you.
I went to the ball back then.
You sold me the house.
Well, oh, yeah, that's the first time I got involved.
I've been there fifteen years.
You were the first.
And I'm glad you're here in person because I want to have this conversation in public.
Well, I don't want to, okay? But I think that we could do, and I think I, I don't think it's as hard a problem as you think.
Then why hasn't it been fixed yet?
What's that?
Then why hasn't it been fixed yet? It's not as a harder problem as she thinks. Why hasn't it been fixed yet?
I mean, if the trees have to be taken out.
The house was built ten, twenty, fourteen years ago.
Two thousand nine, November nineteenth.
What year?
November nineteenth, two thousand nine.
Okay, it's been around for a while. And that's fifteen years, okay? Foundations saved, people work, do work, they grade, grade stuff towards the, the house. You've got a grading issue. That's all you have. And I don't, you know, and, but.
But why do I still have it?
What?
Why have I been dealing with this for fifteen years?
What, ten years ago?
I've talked to you about it twice.
What's that?
We had a conversation twice, once in the street about it.
Recently?
Yeah, the past two years.
Eleven, two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen.
Oh, I'm pretty sure I told you about it in two thousand ten. That was around the time you told me you weren't my contractor for life.
Spent a lot of water with it then.
And in the backyard.
But you have to, I can make some simple corrections.
That would be good.
But I feel like now, I mean, legally, okay, according to state law, in the opinion of the man, everyone says it's not my fault. I know that doesn't sit well with you, okay?
Well, who, I'm not, it's not the trees.
Those pictures, right?
Who was that?
That was two thousand ten. There were no trees. There was one lane driveway.
Where's your home?
My house is over here. This is the backyard.
I observed this.
And these are my, my kids are in these pictures.
I, I.
I know. My kids are twenty years old.
Your sister's twenty.
Twenty-four.
Your, your sister?
My kids.
Oh, my God. Okay, so there's, who are those people?
Those are my kids. They're little. They're big now. This has been going on a lifetime.
All right. Let's get the, I know you've, you've gotten some prices to how to fix that.
No, I haven't.
Oh, I think someone told you you did.
No, I, I'm waiting to hear what needs to be done.
Oh, well.
Mr. Fedorov.
This was before.
Mr. Fedorov, so that, I'm, I'm hearing what the homeowner is saying and I'm hearing what you're saying about, you know, legally this and so forth. So my question, my question is really pretty simple, so that we can at least try and smooth this out, which is not our job necessarily, but to smooth this out and maybe put this to bed, maybe. Big, big M. Let me finish. Is there any chance, are you, can you commit to talking with the homeowner? She's here, you can talk to her outside, you can talk to her tomorrow, and trying to come up with a plan between the two of you so that at least you can bring that back to our next meeting and say, this is part of what we're doing and this is part of what we'd agreed and this is when we're going to do it?
I will invite.
Lisa.
Lisa to come with me to the September meeting. If you don't want to walk, I'll pick you up.
Um, no, no, no. No, no, no. What I'm, what I'm, Mr. Fedorov, what I'm asking, what I'm asking you, instead of coming, just saying if she'll come to the next meeting, I'll pick her up. That's very sweet of you. But what I'm asking you is, can you work with her in the meantime to try and come up with a plan to help mitigate what she's concerned about? You may have to go back to the engineering firm, which the resident may not be crazy about. So both of you may have to go back to the engineering firm. I'm asking you if you can work, try to work together with her and set up a couple of times to meet with her and try to come up with a plan to come back to us and say, this is what we're doing.
Jonathan, when it comes to correcting the issue on her property, I don't need Weston Sampson, you know? This is private property.
So, but are you willing to try and work with her? That's all I'm asking.
I've already had, I've had a plan in my head. I, I knocked on your door. It's not going to be as hard as you think.
It's not going to be a what?
It's as difficult as you think.
Okay.
Okay.
But it needs to get done.
Then it's very good to fix, Richard.
Richard, Mr. Fedorov, if it's not difficult, can you work with her to get it fixed? That's the question, yes or no?
As long as she has breakfast while we're.
No, Richard, Richard, Richard.
Mr. Fedorov, this is not a joke.
If I were a man, would you say that?
Richard.
Yeah, well, but you were.
Richard, Richard, Richard.
Mr. Fedorov, this is, this is not a joke to her. It's not a joke to us.
I'm just trying to make it.
The question I'm asking is, can you work with her responsibly, like an adult, of being frank?
I'll tell you.
To get this.
Yes or no, Richard?
Yes!
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Can I call you?
We'll be good.
Uh, we didn't leave yet. We have a few more residents. I don't know if they want to speak, but if you want to, just make sure you just unmute yourselves. If you're muted, then just state your name just so we know who you are.
Sure, can we hear you?
Yes.
Okay, this is T.C. Bellers, elevated nine fifty-four, Stone Gate. I called in advance to be very cloudless, bad, bad lighting background.
No, it's fine.
So I just want to talk quickly about the one way. I'm sure my other neighbor's input to the one way or to the area. So if I just quickly apply on the one way.
Yeah.
Earlier there was a mention about an emergency gate. And back in, I want to say it was the April meeting, we discussed the emergency gate as well as speed bumps directly went against the idea of emergency. So speed bumps have been taken out, but if you put in a one gate, that stop that required both ambulance, firefighters, police officers to get along the gate and get through. That's a matter of like the best, that's a public issue. And I really don't think this that gate could once again drop before this sort of a public right thing because it doesn't make sense there. Also, I think at one point, the zoning board had requested, Mr. Fedorov, to look at making that a two-way street. I know there's an issue on the gentleman, I think it's a gentleman's house.
Yeah.
I think he owns two, and so he can't make it a two-way.
Right.
If you can't make it a two-way, at minimum, I would say do not put a gate in against for the emergency stop. But that is my opinion. If we can make it a two-way, that would be great. I personally got rear-ended there last week. So if we can make it a two-way, that would be great.
I think, I think you, you might have. Uh, you might have joined on to the meeting a little, a little bit after we discussed that, but that was one thing that I said too, was that I understand the gate might be the best physical way to stop, but like I, and I even said, we're talking seconds and that's, that is literally a matter of life and death. So I'm obviously saying that the gate probably wasn't the best idea. But since we've also discussing about the gentleman who lives almost on Somerset Ave, we were talking about if, if there's an easement before us that might allow us to widen the road to make it a two-way, that's something that we'll have to wait and see for, but that is something that we've already been discussing, yes.
Okay, I still have a hint for a minimum that emergency gate idea was once again struck down because what, as I said, that's a talking fire on the front lawn video.
Yeah.
Um, it truly is, it would be an absolute detriment to put in for an emergency situation. And having a young child, knowing that those seconds are matters between him making it through and not making it through in emergency situations is truly like a high public and safety concern. So maybe for your time, listen to that.
Yeah, we, and I, I even said too, that the letter that he has before, and this is not his fault, but the letters from two thousand three, which is our former police chief, I said I would want something from our current police chief as well as the fire chief to see what they have to say about it. I can imagine they're probably going to agree that gate's not the best way, but that's not for me to decide. But I did want to hear their input on it too. But it's not something that we're jumping to say yes to by any means. I, I, I'm leaning towards even no, but, you know, we'll obviously get that, uh, once we get the feedback from them. But yeah.
Okay. And then if I could say, it's a lot of the floor, I need to quickly know, there's a lot of confusion, at least on my end, about this light post situation.
Are sure.
And a few others, that other gate was really confused on this. I, I was having a feeling that my light posts, I've been saying the electric bill and that to fix one here. I'm having a feeling a plot line that shows that, uh, Fedorov, or anything that shows with this fourteen foot, uh, you know, weighing the heat out of my property, I was really confused on that. And it's not a big issue in terms of, I think, of what was discussed today.
Mm-hmm.
But overall, it's just a little confusing for, also, we can clarify at some point whether this meeting or the next. I know we're going over time. And my son's not in, sorry. So I tried to quickly do that, start fire protection. And then, all right, one more item here. Uh, the sidewalk will be difficult. It's a huge on the other side because that will be discussed later. Um, and as far as the bus turnaround, I actually don't fully understand what the argument is here, or actually the argument, the discussion was here. It sounds like he wants to take it out. We've spoken with everyone. I don't, I've never spoken to him about it at one point when we had a queue back in twenty eighteen or nineteen.
Yeah.
Um, at the Tom, Tom Holland Vegas, no, Vegas, sorry, in Canton.
Right.
It was a recent mention, that bus turnaround. So I just didn't understand what the point was on that today. So again, we can clarify protection on that. Again, it doesn't have to be today, it could be a future meeting. Uh, and that's all bringing it down. Keep on to here. I'm done with creating background. Again, so sorry.
No problem. But yeah, so, yep, so the light post, the, the sidewalk and the turnaround were all things that we kind of weren't sure what, what was being presented tonight anyway. But we decided that because any, any further discussion would possibly require a modification for the permit, so we all agreed to not discuss it further. So for whenever a proposal's brought before us, we have more details. So we're waiting for details on that just as much as you are. So hopefully by the next meeting or next time this is going to be discussed, we'll, we'll have that.
Okay, thank you so much. I just appreciate your time.
No problem. Um, whoever is the next, I think we have, it looks like, uh, three other people. If they don't want to speak and just hear for information, that's fine. But if they do want to speak, someone else can unmute themselves and just state their name and address for the record. That would be great.
Hey, this is Eric, ten point nine fifty-six, Stone Gate. Uh, I, I know there's going to be more details about the public meeting, but what I'd like to hear is at that next meeting is what's going to be done on the subways, twenty, twenty to thirty percent passing is fine.
Yeah.
There's going to hold, there's going to hold a ton of water that does not drain freely. Um, I, I just want to know, are we taking back over that? Or is that going to be accepted? Or is something going to be done about that for the, uh, public transportation road?
And I, I believe that's something that Mr. Fedorov is going to touch base with our peer review engineer on. And they're, and they're going to give him direction. Yeah, that was some, that was one of the things that we don't have to wait for the weather. That was something that he, he said that he was going to, he said, you know, he could take care of that sooner rather than later because it's something that doesn't require the weather to be a certain way. He was going to get in touch with the engineer to talk about what he needs to do for that.
Sure. All right, thank you.
No problem. And I think we have two more left. If they are ready, if they have anything to say, they can unmute, name and address for the record. If not, that is fine as well. Give it a few more seconds in case someone's having trouble unmuting. Okay, that's fine. Um, so I guess that being said, we can move on. You have, you know what you need to take care of, right?
I'm going to do stat right now.
Okay.
Just to be clear too, it's my understanding the modification, I'm sorry, Richard, it's my understanding the modification requests are not going to be filed for next meeting. You're waiting to figure out all of them.
Oh, no, no, I'm not coming near you until we get.
Okay.
So I just don't want to set up false expectations.
If this done and then we get it set, then we apply an altercation, then we do the paving.
Right.
Don't, none of that until we get this.
Okay.
Yes, I think he's just gathering all of the different ones that he needs.
Okay. All right. So moving on to. Agenda item six correspondence. Carrie, I assume you have no other correspondence that came in? Sounds good. Um, public input we already had. I don't think anyone else is here for anything else, anything different. Um, is there a motion on the floor to approve the meeting minutes from July twenty-three, twenty twenty-four?
Motion to approve the minutes from July twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four.
Is there a second?
A second, though.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Four members, anything you want to discuss before we adjourn? All right. I'll make a mo, uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call in the favor.
Aye.
All right. All set.